Good evening, everyone. I'm certainly glad we have a nice crowd this evening. And a short explanations in order as to why we had called this town hall meeting. We have two issues that are going to be on the November ballot, which council has passed, to put on the ballot for resident consideration. Eighteen is the road levy, which is a quarter percent for ten years, and it's going to generate about a million dollars a year. As many of you know, or haven't heard, or if you haven't heard, I'm going to tell you now that there's probably twenty, approximately twenty million dollars in road repair that's needed right now. And over the next five years, there's going to be another seven million dollars needed for road repair. The total infrastructure needs of this city right now, which includes a lot of different things, service department buildings, canopies over the, where we park our police cruisers, and all kinds of other things that are really, really needed, is about thirty-six million dollars. Some of that, there's a little bit of, if you will, a little bit of puff in that. Meaning that we could probably do without some of that stuff that's in there, and I wouldn't say that all of it, but there's some. But the essentials, I would say, are fairly close to that number. Then we also have issue nineteen, which is going to be a continuation of the quarter percent for the recreation facility. What you need to know is that the facility right now is short operating cost of about four hundred thousand dollars. So the million dollars that's going to be generated from the quarter percent that we're asking to be continued, four hundred thousand of that is going to go towards operation, and there's six hundred thousand dollars available, which means we can do about a ten million dollar improvement plan, which would include putting the outdoor aquatic center on, which would also include the gymnasium, which would also include enhancing of the trails and through the park. Would also include drainage issues for the ball diamonds, for the baseball fields and soccer fields. It would also include putting in some basketball courts outside. Community rooms within the building, which would be multi-purpose type rooms where you could have a wedding, a shower, event, a baptism, a little theater for the kids. Those types of activities. It would be a large multi-service room, which would then be broken into three sections, and so you could have three different events into those rooms. As you may remember, back when we initially started the recreation facility, we went to the ballot. Voters voted it in, it was over a twenty-year period, and in two thousand seventeen, June of two thousand seventeen, that expires. So that quarter percent goes away in June of two thousand seventeen. If we do nothing, in two thousand seventeen, if both levy, or both increases were to fail, or the increase in the continuation were to fail, we'd be down to about one point seven five percent. What you really need to know is that communities all around us are at either two percent, going to two point two-five percent, and in some cases going to two and a half percent. Cleveland has got it on the ballot to go to two and a half. Akron's got it on the ballot to go to two and a half. Walton Hills already at two and a half. There's a number of other communities, and I can let others talk about that. Rhonda and our finance department can kind of recite that. So in any event, if we don't have it in place, those other communities will enjoy the fact that they are going to be collecting our money. And the Macedonia community will not get that money back in its coffers, because those other communities are getting a hundred percent reciprocity from Macedonia. So if you work in a community that's two and a half, and we're at two, they're paying that two and a half to that community. Now, if they were at two, if we were at two and a quarter, we'd get point two-five back, because we offer a hundred percent reciprocity, we would get our two point seven-five back. So we would lose money, so what other communities gain, we lose. So doing nothing is not the answer for us. In addition to the fact that we have infrastructure needs. I have defied anybody, anywhere, to tell me where we can find this money. Our coffers do not have monies in it to provide for road improvements. There is not one, in fact, there's no dollars available to provide for the services that are needed for twenty million dollars of road repair. We just don't have it. But we're here to answer any questions that residents have, and hopefully we'll answer them. And I have all of our department heads that are affected by this, that are here to answer any other additional questions. I may have missed some things in what I've recited so far, but as we go along, I'm sure I'll remember other things, and I'll provide you those answers. So at this time, it's really a time for, it's a town hall meeting. It's time for residents that are here that have questions, and we're more than welcome to receive those questions at this time. The only thing I would ask that you would do, please, is to stand, identify yourself, and give us your address, so that we would have that for the record. So is there anybody here that would like to address any issues or ask any questions as it relates to these two issues that are going to be on the ballot in November? Yeah, Roy.
Yeah, Roy Metzger on Smoke Rise Drive in Macedonia. You said there's no money in the coffers, that's the general fund?
Correct.
So, but this levy will not go in the general fund?
No, it's going to be earmarked specifically.
So no matter what happens to the general fund, you still always have money for roads?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes. Yes. That's a good, that's a very good point, because this money will not be used in any other area of the city. It's specifically used for road replacement and repair, and stormwater related issues. And when you ask about what stormwater related is, if you go down Crowe, for instance, and you live down that way, Roy, look at, that's one of our older subdivisions now, with curbs in it, and all of those curbs are deteriorating. From the salt, the catch basins are deteriorating. There's no monies to replace that. I don't care what anybody says, come up with the answers. We have a lot of people running around this community, putting out propaganda, not a lot of people, a few people. Putting out propaganda that is totally not true. Absolutely not. I defy anyone to give me an answer to how or where we're going to get this money at. It's not there.
Well, this, this, this thing now, this, if it fails, okay?
What do we do?
Roads, you know, you might do one road a year or something, I mean, I don't know.
Not even that. Do you know, Roy, that we have not one dollar in capital improvements to put out to roads this year? Not one dollar. In fact, there's a part of our appropriation tonight is to reallocate ten thousand more to the service department, because we now are grinding our streets, trying to patch them ourselves, put a Band-Aid effect over them. And we need ten thousand dollars just from materials. Just to get asphalt. Because we don't have it on a line item. We don't have enough money.
Yeah, well, I don't know. You know, I'm seventy-six years old. I don't know if I'm ever going to live to see my road get fixed, you know? And my roads, not in the poor, poor section, but like you say, the curbs and everything are just, I can see dirt, you know? I don't even see the concrete on some of them anymore. And, you know, we desperately need the roads fixed. Lot of roads. I mean, if mine don't get fixed for a couple of years, hey, I can live with it. But there are some terrible roads. When I go up summer to go to the post office, oh, man, I mean, the roads are falling off, the edges there, there's nothing. You know, they're terrible. So, you know, I really think we need this levy. And I don't know, you know, I'm retired, so I have no earned income as such. So it really doesn't affect me, but it affects my wife. But if I was working, I would still vote for it, because what's it going to look like? Isn't it going to look terrible? The neighborhood's starting to, neighborhood's really starting to look tacky, you know? And, you know, my car's boom, 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 bumping around, and you know, it's like, every time I'm riding around, all of a sudden we hit a stretch, I don't care where I'm at, I said, must be in Macedonia.
You know, Roy, you brought up a good point, that, that your road is not in bad shape. But this, what this levy also does is put money into preventative measures. That means it can go out, and each year, still crack roads out, and make them last longer. And so that is, that is something that has been talked about forever, but never, there's never been a Macedonia roads maintenance plan. And that's what part of this, you know, this issue eighteen would fund that, and each year, and I'm sure Joe can, can tell you how long each row would last, when they're, when they're in a good condition. If you can make them last longer, then you won't have to pay them as soon. And so that is also, I mean, just as important as paving the roads that are very poor, are maintaining the roads that are in the good, the very good. And I'm not sure if very good's the, if that's in there anymore, but, but yeah, keep in mind that, and, and and so, like I said, that's, it's just as important to maintain the roads that we have that aren't falling apart as fixing the ones that we do, in the long run.
Right, now, if this doesn't pass, you have two alternatives, right? Changing the tax on our properties?
Well, you know, I think there's a number of issues that you have, or council could consider. One would be is to take away the tax credit.
Well, that was my second thing.
The other would be to do an assessment on streets, that every street that needs to be paved, you go down and you assess each homeowner on that street to repave it. Or you go out and you do an overall real estate tax increase, which I don't think that you would be then penalizing everybody in the community. You'd be affecting seniors and those that are
Fixed incomes.
Fixed incomes. And so you're affecting everybody. This quarter percent is on those that are working in our city, and those that are in cities that perhaps are not getting an equal hundred percent reciprocity, meaning that if they were below two percent.
A lot of people, I worked, used to work in Brooklyn Heights, and I always paid them the taxes, okay? Nothing ever comes back to Macedonia.
That's right.
So all the years I lived there, I really paid nothing to Macedonia, which is like, okay. So, if you're in that situation, and it goes up a quarter percent, you're maybe talking a couple hundred dollars for your city. Now, I defy you to have fire, police, city services, anything for two hundred and fifty dollars a year, or whatever. You know, that's only on, that's on thirty, forty thousand dollars a year, you know? So, I, I wish they had reciprocity, but that ended years ago. So it would be nice if you shared monies between the cities and said, well, these are your people, so we're going to give you some for your, for your city. But it doesn't work that way, you know, so.
Well, I think there's far reach, more reaching issues than just the two hundred and fifty dollars a year that a resident would have to pay. Think about the impact of the depreciable value that you will have on your property if your streets aren't paved. Think about trying to sell your home, and somebody comes to your home and looks at your street and says, "What's wrong with this city? They can't pave your street? Is there something wrong here?" Now, look, I've been involved in this community dating back forty years.
I know.
We have been robbing Peter to pay Paul for the last forty years of this community. And I was going to talk about this in the regular council meeting, but it, it's so important that we have earmarked money to repave our roads and maintain our roads. This is only for a ten-year period, folks. If after ten years you say, hey, you've got enough money, then you take it away and you don't vote it back in. But if you don't vote it in today, I don't know what the alternative is. I don't think anybody has an answer to that alternative, including myself, other than to say, in some cases, I'd want to shut down some roads. I got pictures here, if you start looking at some of the pictures here, of roads throughout our city. They're such deplorable condition, you wouldn't even want to drive down them.
I don't.
They're falling apart.
I don't drive down. I stay away, you know, so. That's all I got.
All right, Roy, thank you. Anybody else have any comment? Yes, sir?
Jeff Fessmer, Fledge Acres Road. If this is going to get
Jeff, can you come on up? Thank you, I appreciate it, just only because we're, we're filming this.
If this generates one million dollars to use on the roads, it's ten years, you've got twenty million dollar backlog, are we ever going to get ahead?
No.
I mean, you're talking about, well, maybe we'll do some preventive maintenance. I don't see you doing preventive maintenance when you have so many roads, Skyland, Oakview, that need redone. So I don't, I don't see us getting to the preventive maintenance part of it, at a quarter percent, or limiting it to ten years.
Well, and I understand that, and if you remember, we were on the ballot for, for, for a point five oh increase. A half percent. And the reason we did that, because we then realized we would in fact get it passed, but for some people that ran around this community and put out propaganda and lies to the community, it failed. Because they put down that you're going to have an increase of twenty-five percent on your taxes. They didn't tell you if it was going to be a real estate tax, a payroll and profit tax. It was just poor propaganda.
Yep. I understand that. Second part to my question, is it more desirable to retain the quarter percent and try to expand the rec center? Or is it better to have a half percent for roads? Is the rec center going to get increased use if we expand it beyond what we have now?
It's a very good question that you have.
That's it.
It's a very, very good question. And that's, and that's another answer that I'd like to give you by saying that we were very fortunate in this city when Colonel Fru Long passed away, who was a mayor that was considered to be our first mayor of our community, died at a hundred and four, left us three hundred acres of park, but left us with no money to maintain that park. We have scrimped and saved, and borrowed, and, and got donations, and did a whole lot of stuff up at that park today that we have a lot of great amenities up there. And without recreation in your community, and providing recreation in your community for your kids and the, and the younger people that are moving in, would be an injustice, in my opinion. I think we have to continue to provide those services. Will we get an increase? We believe so. We believe that that number will grow based on other communities, and who have added amenities to their facilities, such as adding an aquatic center, and adding gymnasiums, and other things that will increase the membership into the facility. We have fifty-five hundred members in there right now, and we hope that to grow. But our infrastructure inside that building is starting to grow old too. We need to improve the locker rooms. We need to actually expand upon those locker rooms. We're going to add another set of locker rooms if this thing were to pass and we were to build the gymnasium. The multi-purpose rooms will add to that as well. So, we'll do what we're supposed to do, and we'll make it happen. And, and again, if it were to pass, I would be starting that building in the spring of two thousand seventeen. Yes, sir?
Dan Grass, I live at eight nine five Skyland. I've got a few questions.
Sure, Dan, could you step up to the mic there? Thank you, I appreciate it.
First of all, I'd like to point out, I work in a one percent community. All right, so my hundred percent give back doesn't, you know, I'm still writing you guys' checks.
Okay.
Okay? I got a couple of questions. First of all, I'd like to know, year by year, what we spent on road repair for the last five years. Can I get that number?
Sure. Sure. I'm sorry? Yeah. From two thousand twelve, there was seven hundred and nineteen thousand spent on roads. In two thousand thirteen, there was one million nine hundred and six thousand spent on roads. Two thousand fourteen, four hundred and eighty-one thousand spent on roads. Two thousand fifteen, one million four hundred and seventy-four thousand spent on roads. And two sixteen, which I really, not sure what the residual of that is, but it's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. That's all we have to spend this year. If, and that's not really roads, that may have been engineering and other things that we're doing with two seventy-one Route eighty-two.
Okay, so, let's say in the good years, on average, you were able to spend almost a million five on roads every year, right? Seven nineteen, one point nine million? Did I hear you right?
Correct.
Four hundred and eighty-one thousand, that's a half a million, round numbers. Another one point four seven, that's, all right, there's two million between the two, two years. And this year, we chose to only spend a hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Because that's all we have.
Okay. Now, here's my question. Does this legislation that you're trying to pass say, I'm going to earmark everything I spent previously, on average, a million and a half a year, and I'm going to reserve that for roads as well? Because otherwise, it becomes money that we aren't going to be able to track where it went. If you want to solve a twenty million dollar problem, you got a million and a half a year, ten years, you don't have to raise any taxes. You got a million and a half a year for ten years, that's fifteen million dollars to a twenty million dollar problem, that you were able to find in the last five years. Now, next question.
Do you want an answer to that, Dan?
The amount, the amount available, you guys just paid off City Hall, and you paid off the rec center. How much did that free up? You were making bond payments. How much did that free up on an annual basis? What was the annual bond payment?
I'll let our, I'll let our certified public
It was four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars was the payment to pay off this building, close to five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars to pay off the rec center building. But you have to remember that there's more debt coming this year. So that four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars
What's the debt for?
The debt is for a two thousand and ten bond that we are, it's, the payment's going up from seventy thousand dollars to two hundred and forty-five. It was set up that way because they knew that the bond would be paying off. The general fund is responsible for seventy percent of that, so it's an increase of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We bought an ambulance.
But there's another million here, right? Five ninety-one and four eighty-four is a million minus
Yeah, but that five ninety, that five ninety-one is, that fifty-five percent is, went to the rec center. So that's not, that's money that's not coming back into the general fund.
Next call, next question.
Oh, so let me finish my answer, because that number ends up about two hundred and forty thousand dollars is what the relief of paying off this building has on the general fund.
Well, this building plus the rec center.
The rec center, that, that money is not, it's not a relief to the general fund, sir.
Why not?
Well, because it came from the levy.
This is a capital improvement project.
Well, we came from the levy.
We're talking about roads being capital, this is capital.
Okay, you know, listen to my answer. It, it was earmarked, it came, it came, the payment came from the quarter percent that was earmarked for the rec center. That's where that payment came out of.
Okay.
So it didn't come out of the general fund, and it's not going to relieve, relieve the general fund. Does that, does that make sense? I just want to make sure that you understand. So we collect
Money is money. It's either capital or expense.
You're governed by law.
Yeah, but you
By law, we can't spend
You can, because you make the laws. You can change where you put the money.
No, it was voted, it was a voted issue. It was a voted issue, and the money has to be spent at the rec facility.
So that, that's what I'm saying, like, that, that five ninety-one is not a relief on the general fund. It's a relief to the payment to the rec center they don't have to make anymore.
Okay, and so now you've got five ninety-one you can put into rec center.
But, but the levies is expiring at the end of this year. So the, the million dollars that was coming in to pay off the building is no longer coming in. So you're, you're not getting more money to pay off something that you no longer have to pay off.
I'm just trying to help you guys find the money.
So, yeah, well, I appreciate, but I just want to make sure that you understand that there's not a, there's not an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar windfall next year because we paid off two buildings. It's two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and that's, that's a lot less.
Two forty.
Yeah. Rhonda, is, is that right?
Okay, next question. I, I haven't yet seen, and you probably have this, I just haven't seen the list of, here's a road, here's what I got to spend, here's a road, here's what I got to spend prioritized, to know, okay, if you do find a million dollars, how far are you going to get on the list? And if you find the next million, how far are you going to get on the list?
Can you hand us them, please? We have a whole set of them out there for our last town hall.
Okay. Thank you.
And the plan as well.
I appreciate that. Then the next question is, what is the cost to maintain a new aquatic and gymnasium center that's going to become more operating cost to the city? What's that calculated to be?
That's a great question, and I, I think John Doyle is here, and we asked him to reach out, he's the aquatics director currently at the rec center, and we asked him to reach out, because it's a number that, you know, you don't find every day, so you have to reach out and find, and, and he estimates it, is John here? Or did he, did he leave? I mean, do you think it was a million dollar estimate? Is that, you know, safe to say somewhere in that ballpark?
You're going to have to hire people to maintain it.
Well, that's all in.
You're going to have to buy chemicals, you're going to have to do all those things, you're going to have to heat it.
That's, that's what, that's what the million dollars
So are we making wise choices? Again, you know my, my dig here, right? It's all about priorities. It's not usually about the money. With the federal government, with the local government, are we making wise choices because I can entertain my family myself. I can't pave my streets. I can't haul my le, oh, I can haul my levers away, right? So now you're saying, well, I don't have enough money, and, and we've stunk for twenty years, and we're in this mess, and we're twenty million dollars behind on road repairs. This gentleman back here says, wait a minute, you aren't even getting enough to be able to maintain what you got, and we're taking on that much more liability, because you can't just start a building and then not fund it to keep it running, and hire the people to keep it running. I think, my personal opinion, you ought to give it a go without the aquatic center, and pour all that money into roads, and see how far you can get before you put this city further into debt.
The fear is, though, that, that, the, the building was built twenty years ago, and it hasn't been maintained throughout that time.
Well, whose fault is that? That's priorities again, guys.
Well, it's not mine.
It's priorities again.
It's not mine, so if I can finish my answer, is that, you know, in ten years, we're going to be in the same spot as you are with the roads. So you have to get ahead of the problem. Sometimes you have to do things that, that to raise money now, so you don't, so in ten years, maybe it's cost two million dollars to run something. So, you know, you got to take it, and priorities are, I mean, we don't, we're not able to, everything's a priority when you're on city council, when you're the mayor. We've got to take into account all situations, not just roads, not just the, the rec center, everything's a priority to make sure that it's running. I mean, you saw the trucks when you walked in here, those are priorities to the service center, those trucks are falling apart. You know, everything's a priority. So, I mean, you got to make sure that, that we are financially responsible.
Government, primary role of government is safety and infrastructure, not entertainment. Safety and infrastructure.
I would counter that. I would counter that, sir.
Not entertainment.
I would counter that, sir, is that, if, if you're not building amenities, why would you want to move into our town? Because there's a lot of other towns around us that have those features, and you know what? Macedonia is a great little town. But you know what? If you have, if you have the means to buy a, buy a nice house, we're, if you, if you can find a city that has all those amenities, you'd most likely move there. We're trying to make our town for the future. And, you know, right now, we're at the crossroads, if we can extend and expand our rec center, and, and those are the things that are going to bring families here for the next twenty years. And so when you say that it's not a priority, it is, sir. It is for people, it is for people who are looking for, it is for people who are looking to build a house or to buy a house in a city, and have a good school system, and have a night park, park system. And nice roads.
It's all about priorities, guys. That's all I'm saying. I've been here before. I think our priorities have been wrong for a long time. We get a new mayor, all of a sudden we got a crisis. I'm just pointing out some things, some ways that this, this, this is being played up. You know it is.
It's not a crisis. It's a reality.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You know, I, I just want to recite this to everybody that's here, is that there's a misunderstanding about how much money the city actually gets by way of tax dollars or real estate tax dollars from its residents. On a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar home, your real estate taxes, this is an average, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand is an average throughout our community. We get about thirty-five hundred dollars a year from that, or the real estate taxes that are paid are thirty-five hundred dollars a year. Do you know what the city's portion of that money is? The city's portion is just under three hundred dollars. That's all the city of Macedonia gets. Do you know what it costs to maintain in front of your home for police, fire, service, and other things that you receive from the city? It costs the city twenty-nine hundred dollars per that home. So where does the difference come from? It comes from the payroll and profit tax. I said, I think a lot of people don't understand or go back in time. I want to tell you a little story. I was going to say it during my comments during the regular council meeting, but I think it's appropriate for right now. I, when I was elected to council back in nineteen eighty, I got onto council, this city was robbing Peter to pay Paul to pave its streets. There was no money. There was no monies to do that. We were taking road notes out at that time. Every two to five years, we were rotating a note. We could never get on top of our roads. Our roads were falling apart. At that time, too, we would plow our streets, our service department couldn't even salt them appropriately. In nineteen eighty-seven, when I was elected mayor, I took office. There was nothing more than fifty thousand dollars in capital improvement dollars available for this city. And I went out and made all kinds of promises at that time to the residents of this community. And I thought to myself, what am I going to do? There's no monies in the coffer. There's no monies coming in. We've got a little bit of industrial in our community. We have virtually no commercial in our community. in our community. What are we going to do? How are we going to continue to maintain services? We had a part-time fire department at that time, we had no paramedics at that time, we had a very limited police department at that time, no detective bureau at that time, no resource officer into the schools at that time. Our service department was bare bones minimum, we didn't have many trucks at that time. So the first thing that came to my mind, I need to get out and figure out how I'm going to do this. We need to bring in industry, we need to create jobs, we need to bring in more real estate. During my administration back that, at that time, we brought in hundreds of millions of dollars in new industry and commercial development in this city and created thousands of jobs. That's why today, this community is enjoying the fact that that was done back then. The schools benefited greatly from all of what we brought in back in those days. It was a lot of hard work. I used to spend 70, 80 hours a week to bring in industry and meet with different developers and try to bring it in and bring a better tax base to this city. We never asked the residents to increase their real estate taxes back then. Our real estate taxes haven't been raised since the 60s, since the 60s. Here we are, in 2016, and those real estate taxes have remained the same. 9.3 cents of every dollar of real estate taxes come to the city. Where does the majority of it go? It goes to the schools, to the county, to the Cuyahoga Valley Vocational School and metro parks and other areas. It does not come to the city of Macedonia. So we have to rely on the income tax. Now, what's happened over the last number of years? A lot of companies have folded their doors, closed their doors, merged. So those companies are no longer here. We're not enjoying that tax dollar that we used to see and we're not getting the profit tax that we used to see. Our profit tax is way down, companies aren't turning a profit. This year, we're down. We don't know that we'll make the number that we projected for this year on our income tax collection. But that's what drives the engine of this city, is our income tax. So people need to understand, it doesn't pleasure me as mayor to be put into office and have to go back to its residents and say, we need to increase our, our taxes so that we can maintain our streets. It doesn't pleasure me at all. I pay hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in taxes to this city and to this county because I'm a businessman and I got a lot of property. And I'm willing to pull more money out of my pocket to continue to pay for streets and for recreation. That's me. I know I can perhaps afford it and I know that a lot of people are on fixed incomes and can't afford it. But the reality is, folks, if you don't support your city and you don't help it out, your property values are going to depreciate and nobody's going to want to buy your house. And we're going to turn into a ghetto community. And I don't want to see that happen to our community. We've worked way too hard to bring it to where it is today. And I absolutely despise individuals that run around our community and put out propaganda that's not true. It's because it's not the truth. There's no, I have no benefit in this as mayor or administrator of this city to ask you for tax increases. I'm doing this, I can only take you, it's like bringing a horse to water, you can't make him drink. And I can't put out every fire of propaganda that's out in this community. And there's enough of it, by the way. And we need to stop it. Because they're not working for the betterment of this community and for its residents. Those streets will, I guarantee if this fails, those streets will not get fixed. They will remain the way they are. And then the question will be to this council, how do we fix them, folks? Do we go out and create an assessment? Do we take away the credit? Do we go after a real estate increase? What do we do? Do we close those roads down? Maybe that's the answer, I don't know. So I would, I would just hope that people see through the BS that's out in this community and the propaganda that's being put out there, which is absolutely not the truth. Absolutely. Anybody else have any comments?
My name's Melissa Greinke, I live on Laurel Drive.
Okay.
Nordonia resident for about eight years, Macedonia resident for two and a half years, homeowner for the last six months. So, new to this whole process. And I guess I'm a little frustrated because there is a lot of propaganda and I read all of this. But what I'm getting from that propaganda are budgets and figures to look at and I guess I'm kind of an in the weeds person, so that's sort of what I'm looking for. I don't see the same coming from your perspective. I understand costs go up and I'm not opposed to voting in favor of these tax increases, I'm really not. I believe absolutely that you have to invest in your community and I, I think that's really important. I have children in the schools here. But I guess I'm just trying to rationalize some of the figures. And so I went on to the city website to try to pull the budget through the auditor or whatever, wasn't able to do it, so I've got to send out an email to try to figure out how to get a copy of that information. But can you tell me, I guess my first question would be, there was a presentation that was done in Twinsburg, a bunch of PowerPoint slides, a lot of figures and budgets and things that are showing like a 14% increase over the last two years in Macedonia operating budget, or forgive me if I get the terminology wrong on that, but are those accurate figures?
No, they're not accurate. In fact, we've poked holes through that. And by the way, that was not a city-sponsored event. That was Sylvia Haneken with her propaganda in, in bringing it to Twinsburg. Why would you bring it to Twinsburg and not stay in your own community? Because of the propaganda you're putting out. We have, we have an answer, we have an answer for that. In fact-
So there, there was two things that, that I read through and, you know, our finance director can back me up if I, if I misspeak. The one is, the operation cost up. Well, by the end of 2016, which is this year, they'll actually be lower than what the city spent in 2015. But in that slide, it shows they're up over 1.5 million dollars.
But there's a good reason.
Because, because she cherry picked the numbers to show what expenses were up, but didn't take into account the whole operation cost. There's more than running the city than paying salaries. And so when you only take the salaries into consideration, it looks like it's increased. But when you, when you look at the whole picture, it, it's not, it will be a decrease. The other number is, like I already mentioned this, it was the money that's going to be available to the general fund, there, it, it's, it's totally wrong. There's no, you, you can't count money that is earmarked for the park as being available for the roads. And the other thing that's put out there is it's this $225,000 that we are going to get from ONRSD. Well, that's not going to pave one road. Those are for projects that you put in, bids for, and they approve it. And they're not necessarily for roads projects. They're for projects like Sioux Culver and-
Stormwater related and they have to be requested under stormwater.
Which are going to be major projects that they're going to help pay for, but they're not going to fix Oakview. It's just, it's, so it's, it's misleading you, thinking that there's money for roads because that money is not going to be available for roads. So, and I hope that understands. Your name's Melanie, right?
Melissa.
Melissa, well, thank Mel.
Well, and here, I mean, honestly, that's why I'm here.
Yeah, Melissa-
Because I really don't know what's truth or fact in sitting here and listening to all of you. I think you're all good intentioned and you're trying to do what you feel is right for the city. I mean, I don't get any vibe other than that. But you hear this other side of the coin and I think there's an intention there to be fiscally responsible and, and I agree with both of those things.
Right.
But I guess maybe point me in the direction of where I can find-
Well, we're going to provide you that-
So that I can do some comparison because I'd like to vote in favor of this. I'm just sort of, you know, doing my due diligence as a taxpayer and a homeowner to make sure that it's justified. If it's justified, I'm happy to vote for it.
That's fantastic. I wish everyone was like that.
First of all, you know, it was stated in the pamphlets that was given out by Sylvia Haneken, that our budget was 13.3% higher. Now, you've got to remember, that's your budget. That's not an actual, 15 was an actual. So when you look at those numbers, look at 15. But I, here's the other thing. Sylvia was the finance committee chairperson for 2014 and 15. And when she put the budget together for those two years, which she was controlling council and the budget, if you will, her increase over 14 to 15 was $1,742,000, which was a, which was an increase of 16.06%. Isn't that something? Isn't that something? It's a lot more than what this budget is, isn't it? Okay. So, you know, there are things that are just not correctly being stated. We're, this, we're very transparent here. And I'm tired of hearing that there's some transparency out there. We're more than happy to provide these numbers to just about anybody and they're welcome, by the way. I will see to it that they can walk into this administration, to the finance department and get any information as it relates to any year of, of its budget and what we've actually spent. You're entitled to see it and we're more than happy to provide it.
Thank you and-
Can I make one point?
I appreciate that.
Well, before you leave. So we've got a certified public accountant, it's been doing it for well than 20 years. We have a engineer who's educated in the field, is, is very well versed, respected by his constituents in the field. These are the people that I trust. And we're being told by someone who has no education in the field that they're wrong. And that's where I have my difficulty. There's a lot of anger out there right now. I don't get it.
Well, that really bothers me.
I'm not angry, I'm going to give it to you like this, I'm going to give it to you straight, the gentleman that was up here, you know, having your priorities straight. Well, we were given a choice. You don't like recreation? Vote no. You don't like the roads or you're content with what they are? Vote no. If, if you want one or the other, do what you have to do. There's no reason for anyone to be mad about any of this. But the key point that no one knows and maybe it's perhaps because I've been here a long time, but we lost a half million dollars a year. Governor Kasich took away, took away some of the state funding that we used to get to pave roads. So that takes a big chunk out of the money we used to spend to pave roads because what happened was, he solved all his problems and shoved all the issues back down to the local level and we're all going, uh-oh, where do we come up with that half million now? We counted on that. And everyone keeps sticking their hand in the cookie jar, but here we are going, we don't have what we need to do our job. It's not a want, this is a need. We recognize we have an issue. I'm not mad. I'm just going to give you the facts and, and we're giving the voters a choice to say, what do we want to do? But all I ask of anyone in this community, number one, don't get mad, you have a choice. Number two, trust in the professionals in the field. There's no reason to get angry and listen to someone who has no education in, in, in the realm that they're speaking about and just give them the chance to speak their mind. They're the ones that I want to trust. They're, they're here for a reason. We hire them for that reason because they're educated there. So don't be mad. It, it's just simply, we have presented with a choice and if you don't like the choices presented, you know what to do.
Well, and I agree and I think, you know, partly where maybe the other side of the message gets some ground is it's presented in really neat PowerPoint presentation that's spread all over social media and is easy to follow and I might suggest that you whip up your own presentation of a little more detail. Because like I see what's in the newspaper and I, and I, you know, I hear, like I see comments that are posted and stuff like that. I'm reading, I'm paying attention, I'm trying to figure out what's really going on, but maybe putting a little bit more of a detailed presentation of some sort out where it can, because everybody's going to show up to a council meeting, you know, to try and get that information.
We tried to put some of those, we had a, this is our second town hall meeting, I know we tried to put everything on the website that we have. I know there are several committees that are obviously in favor of passing these issues because there are people that are in great support of it. So those committees are putting out ads in the newspaper, there's information sources, there's Facebook, I don't know what you call them, groups, I guess. So they're, all that information's being expressed to everyone. It's, it's the choice of, if there's not enough information or something that doesn't seem right, you have, you can call any number or email any council person, it's, it's well within your rights to say, hey, what, what is this? Is this right? And, and we'll, we'll give you the answer.
Yeah, I think that's what a lot of us are trying to, or at least maybe the newer ones, are trying to just figure out what the actual facts of the situation are. So I appreciate your time.
Yeah, well, you, you would think that those individuals that are out there would get their facts straight though, you see. Nobody has come to this administration and asked to see those numbers. They, they put the numbers out and there's a lot of inaccuracies in those numbers, lots. And we're more than happy to show that based on what propaganda's out there.
I'll stick around and look forward to getting a copy.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
One other point I'd like to make is that in 2008, this city had 221 employees, full-time and part-time employees that worked for it. Today, full-time, part-time employees as it, is, was at 208 employees. So you can see that there's been a, a large reduction in the number of employees working for the city. Now, you've got to remember, part-time employees include those that work in the parks, in the, in the recreation facility, in the summertime seasonal help, some in the, in the, in the fire department, some in the police department, so. Yes, sir. Longtime resident here.
Tom Hoagarth on Broadmoor. Gentlemen, I want to commend you, Mr. Mayor, and the majority of council for doing one hell of a job. Keep it up. I'm proud of all you people. Whatever you want, I know is right. Thank you.
Tom, thank you. Tom, you, you've been living in this community since, what, 1950?
Moved in my house the day Kennedy got killed in November 63.
63, so since 1963.
And going back to the days when the city had the money, I was in the towing business. I can't tell you how many times I towed city vehicles at no charge. Didn't have the money.
And we appreciate that, Tom.
You still have that tow truck?
Any other comments out there? Our former mayor, Don Cook, there, right here.
Thank you. I feel like I'm going to say, hit me, because it's like I'm asking for it and I wouldn't be here because you're doing such a fine job. But it's so important, in my last year as mayor, and Nick can attest to this, we tried to get something like this on before the voters because it was so necessary and we saw this coming. And council wouldn't put it before the voters. It's great now that there is a chance for the voters to decide what kind of city they want. I have some good news and I have some bad news about 271 and 82. The good news, they're almost done. I can't wait. The bad news, we're going to lose a couple of hundred jobs for city income tax. Maybe a lot of people don't realize it, but when these companies are in Macedonia, building bridges, fixing roads, they're paying us to let them be. They're paying city income tax. All right? City income tax from them will stop. Also, when you're fixing roads and you have designated monies put aside to fix those roads, you get a better price. Why do you get a better price? Why do you get a better price? Because people say Macedonia's got this money, they're gonna be spending a million bucks a year on roads. I wanna get in on that. I wanna be there every year. I wanna be fixing those roads, so I'm gonna give them a good price. Because we're not fixing one roads. We might be fixing two or three every year, every year, every year. So, they can almost bring equipment here and leave it here and give us a good price. If we fix one road this year for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, and next year, we're going out for bids, and they say, "These people don't have much money. Throw them a bid, say anything, you know, we don't really want them." They want something that they're assured is going to be here year after year. And the only way you can do that is to guarantee that revenue, and that's in your hands. I'll vote for it. I would've voted for it when I worked for the city, and I'd have had to pay. Now, I don't have to pay, but I still think it's important because I'm proud of Macedonia. I think we should all be proud of Macedonia. Where we are today, from where we came from, when we had a hundred and ten-year-old bridge choking our main artery through town, choking it, we could not even get anybody to come here, let alone live here because of that stupid bridge. And it's all gone. It's blossoming. If you want, build it, and they will come. All right? We're ready, they're gonna come. So, let's just do a little bit more and fix these neighborhood streets so we can all be proud, not the people living in the newer homes, all of us. No matter where you go in this city, you should be able to see a city that would make you say, "I wanna live there." That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, Mayor. Michael LaProuse, eleven sixty-nine, River Drive. I just wanna tell the people in our community, do not educate yourself on Facebook, on any O-Babble, on any of these sites. They're not, if, if I got a question, service, I'm gonna ask the service director. Engineer, I'm gonna ask the engineer. Rondoff, if I have a finance question. And if I don't like what they gotta say, I'm coming to you. That's how I want things done. Don't listen to these sites. You got one scorned person and about five disciples that are ruining it. That's all I have to say.
Can you tell me again something?
Michael LaProuse.
Anyone else have any comments? Just to give you a recital, I, I know that we're coming close to seven o'clock, and that's when our council members need to have their work session. But I just wanted to recite the streets that are earmarked to be paved if this thing should pass. Our Meadow Lawn, Skyland, Eileen, Laurel, Chamberlain to Shepherd, Waters, Thistle Ridge, Berkshire, North Befford to Crowe, Brookpoint, Valley View, Shepherd, Ledge, North Befford, Oakview, Summer Roads, Fox Hill, Robin, Sioux Lanes, Comanche Trail, Shepherd Hills Boulevard, and Sugar Bush Park. I also would like to indicate, too, I'm not sure if it's set up over here or not, but there may have been some talk about us wanting to put in a roundabout at Valley View and Highland Road. And people have said, "Well, why would you wanna do that?" You know? Well, we're congested at that intersection. And it costs one hundred thousand dollars more to put up a full traffic signal with turning lanes than it would be to put up a roundabout. And it's, so it's six hundred thousand to put a roundabout, seven hundred thousand to put a full traffic control, and then you have the maintenance thereof. Now, interestingly, what John is holding up there is something that Greg Bachman, who was our city, our county engineer some years ago, put together for Twinsburg Road and Valley View Road, a cul-de-sac which was found today in the archives, and that dates back to, I think, two thousand nine, was it, Ed?
Two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven. So, that was put together to show how a roundabout could be put at that intersection. Now, that intersection obviously doesn't have the amount of traffic as does Valley View and Highland. So, is it prudent to do something that's a hundred thousand dollars cheaper? Absolutely. Is it prudent because you won't have the maintenance of having traffic lights up? Absolutely. Will it slow the trucks down that are traveling through Macedonia on Highland Road? Absolutely. Okay? And it also creates a beautiful architectural amenity to the intersection. And it's much easier to put in. So, that's why we're leaning towards a roundabout. Does it make sense? Absolutely. It's saving money. It's saving a hundred thousand dollars plus the maintenance thereafter. Those are the kinds of things that we're trying to do. This administration, by the way, is trying to save dollars in every corner that it can find. I know what it is to have no money to operate. I was there before. I understand. And we did much with less. But I'm telling you today that there is just no way around it. We have gone way, way too long without funding our streets and having earmarked money for our streets. And it's really a shame that we are in this predicament. And when we start to rebuild some of these other streets, like when you get up to Eileen, the culvert ditches are so deep that if you walk off the curb, you're in a ditch that's down three or four feet in some cases. We need to relocate those ditch lines. We need to extend the pavement. We need to extend the berms. We need to rebuild them. We just can't just asphalt over them. So, we're talking about major work that needs to be done, but we're gonna do it right. We're not gonna put a Band-Aid on it. We're gonna do it right. And yes, ten million dollars is all we're gonna generate from this quarter percent, and we could use twenty million dollars, and we're gonna try to stretch it as far as we can and make things happen. It's gonna fall probably on some other administrators someday into the future as to how they're gonna have to handle this situation. But it's up to the voters of this community to recognize that there's nobody, no fairy godmother out there, godfather out there, that's gonna come down and say, "Here's some money." It's not there. You can't take something and pay off debt service if it's not there. It's not there. There's no generation of dollars. We talked about five hundred and fifty thousand in local government fund? That's missing? Yes. But let's talk about the tangible tax that we're no longer getting in this community, which amounted to hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Let's talk about the estate tax that the state took away from us. All of these things have diminished funds for the city. They're telling you, and they have been telling us for years, I, I recognize it many years ago, if you want services and you want something for your community, you will pay for it. City of Solon right now has on the ballot to provide for additional, what is it, cars or?
Vehicles.
Vehicles. For, for services, service, service department. They got twenty-five million dollars in reserve funds. And do you know what? City of Solon will pass it. Why? Because the people want to keep their community up. City of Twinsburg, they got twenty-five million dollars in reserve funds. Okay? And I talked to the mayor the other day, and he wished that the, the quarter percent that they dropped off was still back on there because they need the money. But it's great to have twenty-five million dollars in reserve fund, isn't it? City of Hudson has eight million dollars in reserve funds. You know what Macedonia has in reserve funds? What, five hundred thousand?
It could be seven hundred thousand at the end of the year.
Oh, it could be seven hundred thousand at the end of the year. Wow. We got a whole lot of money, don't we? Folks, the reality's here. It's on your laps. You want your property value to depreciate? Vote no. On both issues, or move to another community. It's as simple as can be. Does anybody else have any questions? Roy?
I see these signs out there that say, "Vote no."
Yeah.
They don't say, "What? Vote no?" For what? You know? I mean, somebody's afraid to put their name on the bottom like you normally do with signs that say, "Vote no."
Well, you-
So, I found a whole sign I had of issue one. It says, "Vote yes," and I painted the bottom of it, and I'm gonna put a "Vote yes" on it. Vote no, I'll vote yes.
Well, thank you. Well, you know where that's coming from, don't you? Only one person.
Well, I, I got an idea.
Yes. A person that has an axe to grind, a person that has vindictiveness, a person that's putting out propaganda. It's a shame. It's an absolute shame that somebody was, go out in our community to pass out information that's not correct, to try to dissuade people from voting on something that's absolute necessity. They have no answers to where these funds are gonna come from. Do I get angry over this issue? Yes, I do.
Do I get mad that people are driving through the community and don't even live there, vote no? For what?
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, doesn't even make sense.
Yeah. Well, I, I'm gonna revisit those signs that we have, political signs in our community. I think, I think we need to have disclaimers on them. There's no disclaimers on them. You just can't throw up signs. There should be disclaimers. Who to contact? I'm gonna ask council to revisit that.
Do I need a disclaimer on my "Vote yes"?
Just write your name on there, Roy.
Real small in the corner.
Anyone else have any comments? It's seven o'clock, and I wanna thank each and every one of you for coming out. We're gonna have a regular scheduled council meeting at seven thirty, but thank you for being here.